Good evening. Welcome to tonight's action meeting. We call this meeting to order. First up, we have a video. Mr. Gilner.
Good evening and welcome to this North Penn News update. I'm Audrey Keller. The class of 2023 kicked off the commencement season with the senior prom at Drexel Brook Ballroom last weekend. Over 1,000 students were in attendance to enjoy an amazing dinner and dance the night away. Get your popcorn ready for the largest watch party in the North Penn Valley. Mr. Monero was on hand to interview students as they arrived dressed to the nines. The senior prom show will debut Friday night at 7:30 p.m. North Penn High School's production of Disney's Frozen wrapped up its eight-day run with historic attendance records. Every show was sold out, and for the first time in forever, no tickets were sold out the door. Over 13,000 people came to the North Penn High School auditorium to enjoy the show in person, and several hundred watched online. If you want to follow the process of the production of Frozen, don't miss out on the three-part behind-the-scenes documentary Frozen Defrosted. Episode one is available on the NPTV app, and episode two will be available soon. Pendale students make children's monsters to reality. Gwinnett Square first-grade students drew pictures of a monster and gave it to a Pendale ninth grader in Family Consumer Sciences class. Those students created a stuffed animal version of the drawing. Pendale students delivered them to Gwinnett Square to introduce their monsters back to their creators. North Penn and music continue to be synonymous with excellence. For the 11th year in a row, the North Penn School District has been honored with the best communities for music education. This award is given to districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement in efforts to provide music access and education to all students. Thank you to our incredible music department for providing each North Penn student with a quality music education. North Penn High School students are Lockheed Martin coding champs. Five teams competed in a coding competition, and North Penn took home first place in both the Advanced and Novice Divisions. Congratulations. Shout out to NPTV for earning four high school student award nominations in Best Light News, Arts and Entertainment, Talent, and Best Newscast. Nap and Oak Park Elementary School lunches are getting even better, if you can believe it. Gifted students lettuce from the hydroponic grow labs has made its way into some delicious dishes. The gifted students at Nap have been growing two types of lettuce and basil from seeds. They transfer the seedlings to the lab, where the system waters and sheds light on the plants. The students also test the water's pH and nutrient levels and make any adjustments necessary. Eventually, the goal is for School Nutrition Services to harvest the plants for school lunches. This program was acquired through a grant by School Nutrition Services. Here are a couple of calendar events. The Night of the Arts Show begins Wednesday, May 24th, from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. at North Penn High School. Night of the Arts is a K-12 art show featuring a multitude of media, including drawing, painting, digital photography, sculpture, computer animation, and more. Students will demonstrate their artistic skills live, such as drawing, painting, carving, throwing on the potter's wheel, digital demonstrations, and more throughout the show. The largest outdoor event at North Penn High School takes place this Saturday. The Iron Knights Triathlon will have the most students participating in the history of this event, with over 1,800 students. This is the 11th Iron Knights Triathlon organized by the health and PE teachers across the district. Haven't seen enough of this guy? Join Dr. Bauer for a community conversation. Two opportunities are coming up. Meet at the Lansdale Public Library for caffeinated conversations over a cup of coffee on May 31st at 2:00 p.m. Additionally, join us virtually for community conversations on June 1st, 6:00 p.m. Register at npenn.org. Space is limited. And finally, tomorrow is North Penn Night at the Phillies. Over 500 North Penn staff members and families will be in attendance in the game against the Chicago Cubbies. Keep an eye out for those North Penn Strong shirts if you are watching the game that starts at 7:05. That's it for this North Penn News update. I'm Audrey Keller. Have a great night.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board state their name and municipality. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have some student proclamations. First up... Oh, sorry. Thank you. First up, we're going to have the Skills USA Pennsylvania Leadership and Skill Conference, the state-level HOSA competition for the Greater Philadelphia Auto Technology Competition. And Mr. Steven Monostro, the principal, he will be introducing the students this evening. So, welcome.
Thank you, everyone. So, yes, my name is Steven Monostro. I'm the principal at North Monaco Technical Career Center. Thank you for taking the time to let us honor our students tonight. Our Career and Technical Center has two student organizations. There are Skills USA and HOSA. Tonight, we're going to be recognizing the students from both of those Career and Technical Student Organizations. For Skills USA, Pennsylvania Leadership Skill Conference, Lexus Hang, first-place career pathway showcase. Kayden Hamill, first-place career pathway showcase. Raymond Spurbeck, second-place American Spirit Team. Quinn Lynn Mokas. Alex Dubil. McEwen Funk. Christopher Arta Donata. Audrey Kearney. Our students also competed at the HOSA State Level Competition. Brenda Patel and Miranda Waszolowski were second place in creative problem solving. And we also had an automotive technology student, Robert Nab. He competed in the Greater Philadelphia Auto Dealership Competition and placed second place in that as well.
Mr. Monostro, why don't you come through? And we can give you the...
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Monostro. And here's the rest of them for the kids that didn't make it to me.
Thanks, Steven. Good to see you.
All right. Can we give a round of applause, one more for the kids? Thank you. I think that was it, right, for the proclamations yet? Okay, great. Okay. So, next up is the Audience of Citizens. The guidelines were already read out on the video. So, I believe there was Mr. Altieri signed up already for... Yep. So, Mr. Altieri, you're first up. And then, anyone else who wants to make public comment after him?
Another gentleman, Mr. Yeo.
Oh, Mr. Yeo, okay.
Vince Altieri, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. So, at the conclusion of... Well, for me, the conclusion of last week's meeting, or a couple of weeks ago, I had left, and I wanted to just address Mr. Fusco's commentary towards me. I had asked Mr. Fusco to comment on the three-minute rule. And I got to tell you, when I heard... When I first heard the COVID, followed by "you're done," when I addressed the COVID, I know and understand it's not a conversation, okay? And that's why I leave. The point I'd like to make is, is that when I think about the COVID answer, and there's a parent that had sent me a note that after my three minutes are up, I'd like to give you, Mr. Fusco, for you can address it if you like, and that's why I would like to approach you, if that's okay with you. You know, at the onset of COVID, there wasn't a saint... There wasn't a person in the world that wasn't concerned, okay? And your answer is, that's why we limited speech. That's the exact opposite time you should limit speech. You should never limit speech, particularly when people are concerned and in need. At that point, you should allow them to speak and be the leader that you're supposed to be. So, that, to me, is just such a, for a lack of better term, lame excuse not to listen to parents. And if you remember correctly, that's what drove me to these meetings, is all I wanted was a voice. And I was told that wasn't going to happen, or was going to happen for a period of time, and it continued to be disrespected. So, and then, Mr. Costin made a comment after I left about the fund the school. Let me be perfectly clear. I support school choice, okay? I'm not really sure what anyone's afraid about, competition-wise, about school choice. I'm here today because I want to push academic excellence. And that is the main reason why I decided to show up in terms of my running for school board, okay? So, again, I support school choice because I support competition, okay? And while I would never share a private email back and forth, or the person that I had that email with, the email that I had stated was, and the subject line was "school choice", and I was ridiculed for my support of school choice. You can't comprehend the funding of school... Public schools is not about the funding of public education. It's about giving parents the option to opt out of public schools run by people like you. That's the exact message that needs to get out there. My last 30 seconds, thank you so much for the support on Tuesday. I am so proud that I received the most in-person votes out of any candidate that's either sitting up here or sitting at home, okay? What's driven me to do that is I get out. I'm going to continue to get out, okay? I'm going to continue to make my name heard, and I sure hope we can have conversations. Because, not like the conversations that I heard. Keep on watching the clock, everyone, because I only have another seven seconds, okay? But that is the absolute... I'm going to put one more choice out there. Why don't you put on an action meeting tonight to get rid of the three-minute conversation?
Thank you, Mr. Altieri.
And if you do, I promise to only speak for three minutes.
I promise I'll only speak for three minutes. Put it on the action meeting item tonight. Show leadership courage, change your mind.
Mr. Altieri.
There's the olive branch.
Thank you.
That's what you should do.
Is there a Mr. Chuck Yu here tonight? He signed up to make public comment as well. Okay. I don't see a Mr. Chuck Yu coming up to the podium, so is there anyone else that would like to make public comment right now? Go ahead. Mrs. Braccio, I think I saw her first, and then you can go after her, okay? Thank you.
My name is Julie Reck. I'm a special education teacher here at North Penn. Good evening. I have recently resigned from teaching as I have lost the joy of my journey. I love and have always loved my students. My question is this: Why was I denied an exit interview with the school board? I don't want to complain. I'd like to provide potential solutions in what I consider as a broken system. I would also like to question the decision to change the OT and PT contractor. We are coming off of a national pandemic where children were home for two years virtually learning. Their behaviors are at their peak. I realize this is a financial decision, which seems to drive every decision in North Penn without regards to the students. I have worked with Ostles, which is our current OT and PT contractor, for many years. They are knowledgeable, passionate, and experienced. Has North Penn researched the new company, PTS? Do you know that they have a very high turnover of staff and inexperienced therapists? Is this really worth the money North Penn will save? Lastly, it doesn't matter what the facility looks like or how state-of-the-art it is. The students are little humans who we are desperately trying to educate without support. I encourage the school board to put on their comfortable clothes and visit every single self-contained autistic support classroom in the district to see how the lack of support staff is affecting the students' progress and the mental health of the special education teachers. I know I am replaceable and just a number, but please consider this suggestion for the sake of all the remaining special education teachers, so that they do not lose the joy in their journey as well. I will pray that your children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, or friends will not be subject to a special education system that is as broken as North Penn's is. Thank you.
Thank you.
This article came out April 30th, but what happened in this article was between 2018 and 2021. And I was shocked by it, and I know that a lot of you may not know the extent of the transgender issue that's going on. It is... Some people are calling it an epidemic. Back in 2018 to 2021, CHOP, Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, they have a gender clinic. Why is beyond my comprehension. But during that time, they actually sent out people from that gender clinic to meet with teachers from both Council Rock and Pensbury School Districts to teach the teachers how to speak to children as young as five years old about transgendering. Children don't need to know anything about that. Children are children, and they may act like a boy if they're a girl when they're little. I know that my daughter did. She was part boy, part girl. She was playing with dolls and going in the creeks and picking up tadpoles. So, I have a nephew who had an older sister, and he would play with her toys. These were not cries for help to become the other gender. They were just children being children. So, I don't know why CHOP would do this. I don't know if they're still doing it. I don't know what other school districts there are. But nowhere in this article does it say that the school boards were involved. So, I'm not... How do you know that none of your teachers in this district are doing something like this? You don't know what they're saying to their children, to their students in their classrooms. You have no clue what they could be doing behind your backs, and they're doing it behind the parents' backs as well. One of the things that they have in here is that they basically teach not to talk to the parents. I have another article here, and it's about a horrific tragedy of the transgender movement. And it's about a man who was going to go get himself castrated, and then he ran into two men who had transgendered, and they had this conversation, and they convinced him to not do it, telling him they wanted to kill themselves every day. So, when a doctor says to a parent, "If you don't allow your child to transgender, they will commit suicide," no. They will commit suicide after transgendering. And Sweden has found this out. Sweden is a country that has tracked those people all through. They have now made it illegal for anyone 18 and under to go through any kind of process towards transgendering.
Thank you, Mrs. Braccio.
I just want... I will be sending more information to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Gad?
Ms. Anne Gad, Lansdale. Being a public official makes you more in the spotlight than any other person in the community. Anyone representing the community and working for We the People are not immune to any scrutiny. As more and more evidence comes out of a clear agenda for this district, taxpayers, parents, caregivers, et cetera, are seeing the destruction left in its path. Elections have consequences. In your case, social media and awakened parents may not be on your side. COVID lockdowns, masking against parental rights, poor grades, lowering standards, trans agenda, pornography books, increased spending, lack of special education, lack of transparency, dictatorship toward parents, raising taxes... I'm sure there are many more failures you could run on. There are more people that see right through the corruption, and it's over. We have some fantastic candidates who stepped up to challenge the status quo: for parental rights, full transparency, less spending, lower taxes, academics, et cetera. Vince Altieri, Diana Blystone, Liz Vasquez, Michael Jowder, and his main I U S. We need to flip this board the same way Jesus flipped tables when corruption was occurring in his temple. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Lanier.
Jason Lanier, Lansdale. First of all, the agenda that was put up was put up 24 hours ago. I know that's the requirement, but there is some complicated paperwork that is in here that you guys... I don't believe anyone on the board has read the contract that is going to be signed regarding the Schrader Group. Now, I don't say there's necessarily something wrong in there, but there are details, there is granular information, which tells you what they... We, as taxpayers, are going to be paying them to do. And it looks like the options, Option 1 and Option 2 for renovating the high school, aren't really options. There is two things that you guys are going to do. One is the ninth-grade center. You're paying them to do a full... Building a new ninth-grade center. And the second one is a high school full renovation, 21st century learning idea. The idea that we're going to pay somehow $400 million, and the education requirements are going to get better. But I want... What I really want to know is, what does it cost to fix the high school as-is? And that isn't... There's no granular data on that, except for back in 2019, there was granular data provided, or there was an estimate for doing that. And it was $139 million. Juxtapose that to what you guys are talking about now, and we're up to $247 million, so over $100 million more. What is the difference? What... In that short... In four years, how is it that the cost to renovate the high school, to bring it up to code for the ADA, to fix the plumbing, to fix the pipes, to fix the electrical, has gone up $100 million? How has that happened? And I suspect something. I suspect the cost that was before, which was actually trying to fix the building, and the cost now buries the cost of the health... Or that the... The ninth-grade center buries the cost of the renovations. And that's because the way this is going down, from my point of view, is that the voting referendum for the ninth-grade center automatically puts us in a $4 million buy for a high school. But the ninth-grade center, I think, is going to cost more than what is put on the paper, and I think the renovation is going to cost more, when the true cost for fixing the high school is significantly less than what's on this current docket for 2023 going forward. You guys are telling us that it's $218 million, $228 million? And it was $138 million in 2019? Can somebody tell me why it has gone up so much? Why? And you're going to tell me my time's up, and that's another thing. That's another thing that you guys need to realize. You put a pass a policy about communicating with the...
Mr. Lanier, your time is up.
I understand that. But you put together a policy, and then violate your policies.
Okay. Thank you.
You don't listen to the front end.
Mrs. Blanc. Mrs. Blanc would like to make a comment now.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
Why are you spending so much money on something to help raise the grades, but it doesn't look like it's going to... It's going to raise them to the ground. Thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Blanc.
Hi. I'm Erin Monticelli.
Mrs. Blanc, would you mind hitting the button there?
Oh.
There you go. You're good.
Okay. I just want to talk about, like, the way that meetings are conducted. I've been observing meetings in other school districts lately, trying to get ideas on different things and just, you know, that's something I do. And I don't see this board discussing in public. I do watch every committee meeting. You probably know that. I watch them. I look at some documents. But I don't know how all of the board members are, like, sharing information. If you're not allowed to have meetings of a quorum, you know, in behind closed doors, I don't understand how that's being done. I know we keep talking about transparency. I don't feel it as a public community person. I'd like to see more discussion. I see ideas being presented and just voted, usually yes. I don't see a lot of questions being asked in public. I just think that that's really needed in this community. I see some board members who I truly feel are along for the ride. They ask questions that I can answer just by watching meetings or looking at documents. And so, you know, I think someone else brought up the fact that, like, you'll get a document 24 hours before your meeting. How do you have the time, when most of you work, to even go through it and understand it? And so, transparency is key. Communication is key. I say this to a lot of people in my life. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mrs. Blanc. Is there anyone else that wants to make public comment right now?
I have an objection.
No. You're not a resident, Mr. Monticelli.
Actually, I'm allowed to make an objection.
Just let him do it.
Can I approach the podium and...
Just to be clear, this is a Sunshine Act objection?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And could you say your name and your...
It's under Section 703.
And what... Could you say your name?
Sure. I can spell it out for the record. It's going to be Giuseppi Crani-Monticelli. That's going to be spelled out for the record as G-I-U-S-E-P-P-E-C-R-A-N-E-Y hyphen Monticelli, My objection, under Sunshine Act 703, is going to be this contract that Mr. Lanier just talked about, and all the other agenda items that have attachments to them. Yeah, what do the homeless do? What do elderly people do that don't have access to a computer? Those attachments need to be present here in the room. So, that's my Sunshine Act objection for the record.
Your objection is noted. Thank you.
A vote could be taken place for it, because I asked that you guys recess until that's complied with.
Thank you. Your objection is noted. Madam President, just for the board, the Sunshine Act requirement is that the agenda be posted. That has been complied with. There is no legal requirement that every single attachment be publicly posted, or that it be... Which it is publicly posted on the website, but that it need to be printed in here in the physical room tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Summers.
Counselor, can anyone make an objection? You don't have to be a resident, right?
Your objection is noted. You did.
Is that right?
We allowed you to make your objection.
Thank you.
I actually do have to say something for what it's worth. If nobody else, I'm going to wait. Everybody's done.
Okay.
Part of the rules of Sunshine Law is that you guys create your own rules. You created the rules to follow... Your rules and regulations is to follow the Roberts Rules of Order. It says "shall." It says you "shall" take a vote. It doesn't say you object and "no" it. Don't say "no" it. You're supposed to take a vote, is according to the Sunshine... According to Roberts Rules of Orders, which you guys agreed to follow.
Understood. Your objection is heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier. Please have a seat.
Right? Are you supposed to take a vote, yes or no, on Roberts' rule of order?
As I have explained numerous times to you, Roberts Rules is utilized as a guide for the district. And this is not even a Sunshine Act matter. The Sunshine Act says that the board may adopt reasonable rules and regulations regarding the conduct of its meeting. And the only objection would be if the Sun, to those rules, would be if they otherwise violated the Sunshine Act. You've pointed out no way in which any provision of the Sunshine Act is violated by the board not voting on your objections.
Thank you, Mr. Lanier.
Your objection has been noted. It's been noted numerous times.
Please have a seat, Mr. Lanier.
Do you not follow the rules?
Mr. Lanier, please have a seat.
Is that over today?
Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time?
I'd like to make a second objection. I'd like to second the objection made by Mr. Lanier.
Thank you, Mr. Monticelli Crani, Crani Monticelli, whatever. Thank you. Okay. Moving on then.
No, no, I, I actually-
No, we're not.
Did you vote on that?
No.
No, no, no. But I did want to respond.
That wasn't from me. That was from, that was from a parent.
No, I understand. No, actually, I'm glad you-
Mr. Altieri, please, we do not yell out from the audience.
No, you're not going to ask me. I'm going to address-
We asked you for-
Mr. Altieri.
You didn't take the call on the three-minute order.
No, we're not. But I am going to address-
Mr. Altieri, now is not the time. You, Mr. Altieri, you had your time to make public comment. Now it's Mr. Fusco's turn to respond.
Do you have a question?
It hasn't appeared on the agenda for 24 hours, so we have an objection from the floor. We can't, we can't do it.
Okay, well, thank you for that answer. Consider it for the next time.
Mr. Altieri, please stop yelling out from the audience. Please stop yelling out from the audience.
You're not going to listen when I get up there, so why shouldn't I yell? Mr. Fusco, you can answer that comment. That wasn't from me, and I'll listen to it. Thank you very much for answering.
Have a good evening, Mr. Altieri.
The, what I'd like to say is, Mr. Altieri, the email that was presented to me is actually accurate. I was, I was, I misspoke at the last meeting. I was wrong. I'll just say I was wrong. Sometimes when you're sitting up here and you're speaking impromptu, you get stuff wrong. We did not institute the three-minute rule because of COVID. We instituted the hour-long session and to limp to stop because of the dearth of people that were asking in the length of the meetings at that time. But no, we did actually have the three-minute rule prior to that. So, I realize that actually is pretty much after the meeting that I misspoke and I shouldn't have said it, and I was wrong, and you are correct to, and I, for giving the opportunity to correct the record. So, you're right about that. And for what it's worth, I apologize for saying you were done.
Thank you. As well. You voted on the three minutes. That will be the best apology ever.
Have a good night, Mr. Altieri.
Dr. Bowery, any, no, I'm just asking about, okay.
Let's move on now. We're going to move on to the minutes. Can I have a motion, please, for the approval of the minutes from the April 25, 2023 action meeting, and the minutes from the May 9, 2023 board work session? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich, seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we'll have the committee reports. First is the personnel. The Personnel Committee of the Board met on May 2, 2023 to discuss the matters of personnel, including the appointment of staff and staffing considerations. End of report. Next up is finance. Mr. Fusco, please.
Sorry, just a second here. Why don't I see the committee reports? Oh, because I'm looking at the wrong agenda, that's why. Sorry. One second here. Yeah, technical problem. Okay. At the April 25 Special Finance Committee meeting, the following items were discussed. Detailed department budget presentations were made for the following departments. Dr. Pamela Hart gave a presentation on our curriculum. Dr. Mike McKenna on elementary education. Dr. Mia Kim in human resources. The executive summary, presentation, and line item budget detail for each department are posted in board docs. At the May 9, 2023 Finance Committee meeting, the financial reports and budget transfers were reviewed in addition to the following items. Mr. Skoraki provided a presentation on the latest draft of the 2324 budget. The proposed final budget appears on tonight's agenda. Mrs. Melissa Froelich discussed proposed legislation, SB 180 and HB 180 to provide free meals for all students in Pennsylvania. The resolution of support for the proposed legislation appears on tonight's agenda. Mr. Skoraki reviewed the real estate tax installment plan and penalty amount. Each of these items appears on tonight's agenda. Mr. Skoraki reviewed the results of the dental insurance request for proposals. A contract with Delta Dental appears on tonight's agenda. Mr. Lankie presented information about the school-based access Medicaid reimbursement program. Mr. Skoraki provided an overview of the gaming funds distribution for the 2324 fiscal year. The gaming funds are used for the homestead exemption for property tax relief. The exclusion amount for 2324 will be approximately $264 per eligible homestead or farmstead. Mr. Lankie reviewed the recommended vendor for the telephony audit. The contract appears on tonight's agenda under the contracts section. Dr. Bauer discussed conducting a request for proposals for a referendum consultant for the possible high school project. This item appears on tonight's agenda. Mr. Skoraki also reviewed the background regarding the proposed resolution dealing with small games of chance for booster groups. This item as well appears on tonight's agenda for the softball boosters. Our next meeting will be held Tuesday, May 23 at 6:00 PM. It is a special meeting. And on Tuesday, June 6 at 6:00 PM, both meetings will be held here at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to Safe Schools. Mr. Casa, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The Safe Schools Committee met on April 24, 2023. Mr. Roan provided an update on the High School Student Safety Committee's first meeting. The High School Committee will hold its first meeting of the 2022-2023 school year on Monday, May 22, 2023 at 2:15 PM. Mr. Roan then provided an update on North Penn School, the North Penn School District's Behavioral Threat Assessment Training. Behavioral Threat Assessment Teams complete Level 1 training online and Level 2 training in person with Mr. Roan instructing the training. And I might add, we have a nationally recognized training expert in Mr. Roan as our lead security coordinator. Behavioral Threat Assessment Teams, the second round and Level 2 of the training is May 18. Finally, Mr. Roan shared that the ESC administrative team, along with local emergency first responders, participated in a tabletop exercise for response to an incident at one of the district's schools, a hypothetical response. Mr. Roan and the team look forward to the next step in emergency preparation with the planning of a full-scale exercise. I'll add that the Safe Schools Committee also looks forward to after-action report when that also comes together for the exercise. The next Safe Schools Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 22, 2023 at 5:30 PM, and will be held in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the educational, Education Curriculum and Instruction Committee report. Dr. Lewis Campbell, please.
Thank you, Madam President. The Education Curriculum Instruction Committee met on Tuesday, May 2. Mr. Jim Galante presented an update on the various aspects of the program at the North Bridge School and how it is helping students succeed. A tangible data point of its success is that it has exceeded its goal for student attendance this year at 87%. There was also a very brief update regarding second chance learning and authentic assessment. In addition, the committee reviewed action items that included student travel and an ELA curriculum adoption for grades K to 6. Next month, the committee will meet on Tuesday, June 20 at 5:30 PM in a virtual format. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis Campbell.
You're welcome.
Next up will be policy. Mr. Rash, please.
This month, the Policy Committee will meet virtually on-
May, oh, this month, the Policy Committee will meet virtually on May 22 at 5:00 PM. Thank you. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. Rash. Next up is Facilities and Operations. Mrs. Wesley, please.
The Facilities and Operations Committee met on Monday, April 24 in a virtual format. The committee reviewed the following item to be moved to this evening's action meeting for the board's consideration. It is the bid award of the exterior improvements to Napp Elementary School. The committee was also presented with and discussed informational items, which included the chiller and exhaust fan projects, delayed shipment of the chillers, and the ability to have temporary chillers to support the work, and the delay, I should say, the preliminary schedule for the potential high school project, and an update on the 10-year capital project plan. The next Facilities and Operations Committee meeting is scheduled for Monday, May 22 at 7:00 PM, and it will be in a virtual format. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, then we will move on to the North Monco Technical Career Center, please.
The JOC met on May 15 at 6:45 PM in an executive meeting to discuss a personnel issue. The JOC also met on Monday, May 15 at 7:00 PM for a regular monthly meeting. We discussed that the tech center has space for a little over 1,300 students and then now over 1,200 students. Several ideas were presented on how we can offer students more opportunity, including new programming in the limited space, and how we could expand our capacity if needed. In a meeting, we also discussed how we would ensure that our graduates would receive an education that provides a living wage. A plan was developed and shared with the JOC that will be used to ensure that these goals are achieved. End of, end of discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rash. Next up is the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit report. Mrs. Ramich, please.
Great, thank you. The MCIU Meeting Board met on April 26. We started off with a program highlight featuring an update on the MCIU's Office of Early Childhood Services early intervention activities. The team was pleased to share that Fox 29 News recently visited the Soderden Early Intervention Classroom to highlight fundraising efforts made by a parent of one of the students in partnership with the Eagles Autism Challenge. The presentation also continued on with an overview and review of MCIU organizational goals for the 2022-2023 school year, with updates made of progress thus far. The board approved budget revisions, contracts, and a new campaign agreement with Audacity Philadelphia for radio and digital marketing. The MCIU Board also approved salary ranges for MCIU administrative, confidential, technical, and 2023-2024 classroom professionals. There were 15 new hires, five resignations, two retirements, and one professional contract that was also approved. The next meeting of the MCIU Board will be on June 28. End of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. And we will just stay with Mrs. Ramich and go on to the North Penn Educational Foundation report, please.
Great. The foundation last met in April at the ESC. I'm pleased to announce that the foundation approved its first-ever equity and action grants that will be available to all schools in the fall of 2023. These $1,000 grants will help schools create welcoming environments and provide programs and resources for all students and families. We also discussed our ongoing efforts to raise funding to brand Crawford Stadium. With more than half of the dollars raised, you should start to see changes at the stadium soon. Thank you to those who have already contributed. Tomorrow, the Grant Committee will review about 40 grant proposals for the 2023-2024 school year. We have already approved up to $35,000 in funding. And finally, thank you to everyone who helped to make our annual online auction the best yet. We raised more than $15,000 to help fund innovative projects in our schools. The foundation next meets on May 21 at Pendell Middle School. To learn more about all things foundation-related, please visit npennfoundation.org or contact Christine Labrovsky at the ESC. I also just want to share that the Montgomery Mall is hosting a carnival, and all proceeds from the carnival will be donated to the North Penn Educational Foundation. The carnival will kick off on May 23 and will run through May 28. So, those weeknights in there, the carnival will run from 6:00 to 10:00. And then on Saturday and Sunday, May 27, May 28, it will run from 3:00 to 10:00. So, members of the North Penn Educational Foundation will be there volunteering over the weekend, and we hope to, you guys will come out and see us. Thanks so much, and end of report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. What were those dates again?
Uh, May 23.
Sorry.
May 23 through May 28.
Gotcha.
So, it'll be in the parking lot of the mall near JCPenney.
Thank you. Okay. And then our final committee report is legislative. Mr. McBane, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Pennsylvania General Assembly has been very busy over the past month, and many of the proposals moving through the legislative process could directly affect our North Penn community soon. The House is considering an expansion to the property tax and rent rebate program, which would increase the income limits of qualified Pennsylvanians to $45,000 per year for homeowners and for renters, as well as raise the minimum possible rebate. In what would be the first expansion to the program since early 2007, 173,000 more families across the state would qualify, which would surely include some of the folks here in North Penn. There is also a proposal to create a grant program entitled Pennsylvania Solar for Schools, which would cover the cost of equipment purchase and installation, energy storage, and utility interconnection in an effort to bring the benefits of solar energy to public schools, technical and career centers, and community colleges. The bill, HB 1032, would create a significant opportunity for communities like ours to create jobs, take better care of our environment, and reduce the costs for our taxpayers. Finally, some of the bills that were mentioned in last month's report have passed a vote in the House and are moving on to the Senate Education Committee for a first look. These include House Bill 100, which would allow school districts to provide opportunities for high school juniors and seniors to gain both educational experience and academic credits for tutoring younger students at the elementary level. HB 688 seeks to replenish the pipeline of well-prepared educators by offering a new PAT scholarship program. HB 148 would increase awareness about eating disorders among students in 6th through 12th grades and provide families with resources and guidance in identifying and treating these challenges. I know we'll be talking about HB and SB 180 in a little bit here, so we'll skip over that for now. The Senate Education Committee will be discussing some of these during their next meeting on Monday, May 20. As always, neighbors are encouraged to contact the representatives to voice their opinion about these proposals. End of report.
Thank you, Mr. McBane. Moving on then to the Solicitors Report. Mr. Summers, please.
Thank you, Madam President. My report this evening is to announce that the board did meet an executive session immediately prior to tonight's meeting for the purpose of discussing a confidential student matters, as well as a matter of school safety and security. And briefly, relative to the issue of public comment and a per-speaker time limit, I have looked into that particular issue, and my understanding is that every school district in Montgomery County, through either practice or policy, imposes a per-speaker time limit. And in fact, the majority of districts, more than 15, I believe, have utilized three minutes as their time. So, certainly, the district's practices are consistent with the practices and policies utilized by other schools in the region. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. And thank you for looking into that. Yes. Okay. Next up then will be the Superintendent's Report, please.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. We will begin with the consent items. I recommend approval of items A through K, specifically the adoption of policies, the adoption of policies for a first read, student travel, contracts, gifts to the district, approval to advertise for bid, bid awards, science supplies, rejection of the PE equipment and supplies bid, student agreements and hearing waivers, alternative placements, and student agreements.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend approval of the personnel items as per the attached.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
With that, I will note, we don't typically have a new teacher in the audience, but we did have who just stood up and walked out. Jacqueline Matthews is a new special education teacher for us, and it just so happens that her father is Neil Evans, formerly a substitute special education administrator in the district. So, congratulations, Jacqueline. Hopefully, you're at least listening in the car.[1768.95][1768.95](LAUGHING). All right. Next, I recommend that the adoption of textbooks and related resources in the subject areas of social studies, psychology, French III, Latin I and II, American Sign Language, Secondary English, Algebra I, Intro to Hospitality Management, and Financial Applications with Technology, as listed, be approved.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions?
Just, I recommend-
Just, I recommend, for those who think that we don't ask questions or deliberate, that you watch the ECI meeting where we discussed these curriculum adoptions. It was a two-hour-long meeting, and there was an awful lot of question asked, so.
And the texts for these adoptions were available for review.
Yes, that's correct.
Yep. Okay. So if there's no further comments, or there's a motion on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
I was going to give a pause here. I see Mr. Gomer is working in the truck, and we have our scoreboard back up. Okay. Next, I recommend the approval of the bid award in the amount of $130,412 to Robert Michaels and Associates for the exterior improvements to Napp Elementary School, including the base bid and alternates numbers 1, 2, and 3.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, I think seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend the approval of a contract with the Schrader Group Architects for architectural services for the North Penn High School Design Project as per the attached. Also of note here, I'd like to just share that back in 2018, the architect contract template was developed by the district in conjunction with the solicitor. The template was part of the RFP that was conducted for architectural services, and tonight's contract is the same template with the high school-specific information filled in similar to Napp. The fee for the high school project is 5% of the construction estimates. The Napp project was 6%. And just for clarification, the review was done by Rudolph Clark.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Casa. Are there any comments or questions?
President Stoll, I just want to comment on the contract, that the contract, I think, protects the administration, the district, in terms of the risk that we would incur during this phase. So I'm happy to see that. The burden is on the architect, and it does allow for negotiation or arbitration. So for the details at this level, I'm pleased with what I see and what I've seen at corporate.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. I appreciate the comments.
And this has got nothing to do with this, but I want to just go back real quick to the Napp bid. I believe that it was quoted as $130,000. It's $103,000. Is that correct?
I'd have.
The Robert Michael and Associates, 103,177.
It looks that way. You're correct, Mrs. Wesley. It looks like there was a typo in the actual resolution, but under the public content in the exhibit, it does show the 103,000.
Yes, that is correct here, but I just want to make sure that for the record, it's 103, not 130.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley.
Bad timing, but.
No, that's okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Okay. Are there any other comments?
I would just like to thank the Chair of our Facilities and Operations Committee, because this is what was just mentioned for the community tonight. To put that in context is what Ms. Wesley has brought to this board over the years, making sure that that risk is shifted to our vendors or contractors. And this is a great gain for taxpayers, and commend the administration for also making sure that this was put into place. And I think Ms. Wesley just demonstrated her attention to detail. This is what happens behind the scenes. People think that there's conversations that may occur amongst board members in deliberation. That does not happen. But chairs can speak directly with the administration, can then speak to other individual board members, and it's because of actions of Ms. Wesley that these type of things can move forward. So sometimes, it's not all as conspiratorial as it may seem, but we appreciate those who spend the time to pay attention to the board and continue to watch our meetings and understand what good governance and transparency looks like.
Thank you, Mr. Casa. Are there any other comments? Okay. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend the adoption of the 2324 Proposed Final Budget Resolution in the amount of $312,227. Did I miss one?
Yeah.
Well, I'll finish this one, and I'll go back. In the amount of $312,227,15 per PDE Form 2028, an authorization to publish notice to adopt the final budget in accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code and Act as per the attached.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
In the spirit of Mr. Fusco's comment about two-hour meetings, we did have a two-and-a-half-hour finance meeting where Mr. Scrocky went into great detail about that budget. So please feel free to watch that if anyone has questions. Next, I will go back up to item E and recommend approval to advertise for a referendum consultant.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the attached resolution establishing the rates of discounts and penalties on the payment of the 2324 real estate taxes.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Again, see aforementioned meeting. Item H is recommend approval of the 2023 Real Estate Tax Installment Payment Plan as per the attached resolution.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend the election of Mr. Ronald Linky Jr. as a non-member treasurer of the Board of School Directors for a one-year term beginning July 1, 2023, through June 30, 2024, and the establishment of a bond in the amount of $5,000 with the premium to be paid by the school district. Compensation for duties assigned by the CFO shall not exceed $100 per month.
Can I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions? The treasurer of the board is the only person that has a bond. Is that correct, Mr. Scrocky?
Board Secretary does as well.
Okay. So two bonds. Thank you. No, they don't. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. Next, I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Welsh Road Retail LP concerning the property located at 227 DeKalb Pike, parcel 460000709018, Montgomery Township, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $2,262,000 to $2,080,430 in 2021, and from $2,262,000 to $2,083,800 in 2022. The appeal was initiated by the property owner.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Couple more assessment appeals. So I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Rees North Wales PALP concerning the property located at 1218 Welsh Road, condo 1, parcel 460004153013, Montgomery Township, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $2,614,380 to $2,175,620. The appeal was initiated by the property owner.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco, seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions?
President Stoll, I just want to ask Mr. Scrocky a question about what we're seeing here tonight on the agenda with the refund to the property owner from the district. Is there a common thread through here regarding what the basis is for these refunds reductions?
Not really. There are four different property types. So these are all initiated by the property owner. They felt that the property was over-assessed, and based on our independent review, we agreed that the properties were over-assessed. So in this particular case, we were negotiating and trying to mitigate what the reduction would be. But again, they are distinct property types. There's real no common theme, except for the ones on Welsh Road. They are the same property owner for the two settlement agreements we have tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Wesley. Are there any other comments or questions? We have a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. I recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and, is this, this is the same owner?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. North Penn School District and Rees North Wales PALP concerning the property located at 1222 Welsh Road, condo 2, parcel 46000415302-2, Montgomery Township, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $7,135,690 to $5,942,380. The appeal was initiated by the property owner.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last assessment appeal for this month, recommend that the attached stipulation to settle the real estate tax assessment appeal between the North Penn School District and Glickman &amp; Steinberg Real Estate Partnership concerning the property located at 2605 North Broad Street, which is parcel 35000108100-9 in Hatfield Township, be approved as presented, and that the board president be authorized to execute the stipulation. The current assessed value for the parcel shall be decreased from $797,300 to $554,400. The appeal was initiated by the property owner.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. This item, I have a feeling, will show up on the agenda quite a bit moving forward as well. Recommend the approval of the attached resolution recognizing the North Penn Softball Bullpen Booster Club as a nonprofit organization that has been established to promote and encourage participation and support for extracurricular activities within the North Penn School District in accordance with the local Option Small Games of Chance Act. So this was outlined in the finance meeting, that this has always been in the law, but it seems to be enforced now that they need the board to pass a resolution in order to get their license for small games of chance. An example would be the music aids at football games run a 50-50 as a fundraiser. They need to have a permit in order to have a small game of chance.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mrs. Ramich. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I recommend approval of the attached administrative services agreement with Delta Dental for a three-year period effective July 1, 2023, for a fee of $3.89 per employee per month.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. McBane. Any comments or questions?
I have a question, Mr. Scrocky. Is this a reduction? If I have memories correct from finance. That's correct. It is a reduction. We, in consultation with our healthcare consultant, we conducted a request for proposal, an RFP, and the administrative fee is going to decrease. So there's going to be a cost savings here in this three-year agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. If there's no further questions, motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Lastly, I recommend approval of the attached resolution in support of Senate Bill 180 and House Bill 180 to provide free meals for all students in Pennsylvania.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any comments or questions?
I just want to thank Mrs. Frolic for taking the time to share a background on these two pieces of legislation. I think one of the most critical roles that a school board can play is for advocacy, and especially advocacy that is rooted in understanding the true need of our students, our community, and our school district. So this is such a great opportunity to be able to expand access to healthy meals for our students and to keep that going. I'm also, just a quick comment, that I am also, I think, the board liaison to the district's Wellness Committee, and this was talked about a little bit, and just such a great team that does talk about the projects and things that are happening within the district. So very grateful for that opportunity as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramich. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
And before I end here, I recognize that this is unconventional, but I'm going to do it anyway. These jobs, when you're in the office for, say, 15 hours today, have some collateral damage, and occasionally, there's collateral damage with my family. And I just want to say publicly that my son is playing a baseball game right now, and he just hit a three-run homerun, and I'm really proud of him. So congratulations.
Way to go. Way to go. You've been predicting that this day will come. Yeah, I think it's here, and let's note it. Thank you for being here.
My wife's coaching first base instead of me.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Next time.
President Stoll.
Yes.
I have to go back and say that I made a mistake with that bid resolution total cost for Napp.
Right.
Actually, I was doing it in my head, adding it up, and I added it incorrectly. So the value that Dr. Bauer presented was the correct total number. So I apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, I think the confusion is here, because it threw me off, too, looking at these numbers quickly. So the resolution is correct. That's the base bid plus the alternates. Under public content, there's a $103,000 number listed there. That's just the base bid amount. So base bid plus alternates equals 13412. So nothing will need to be amended on that resolution as a result.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, we'll stick with Mr. Scrocky for now and have the financial report.
For now. Appreciate the endorsement.
There you go.
Actually, I have an introduction made. I have a guest in the audience tonight I'd like to introduce. We have a young man who's a senior in high school. He's doing his career study here in North Penn School District. He's working in the business office for the next three weeks. So his name is Nolan Heil. Nolan, can you stand up, please? So I want to talk about Nolan a little bit. Nolan's mom works here at the school district. Her name is Lynn. She's one of our instructional coaches this year. And Nolan is a senior at Perkyomen Valley. He's going to study business at University of Pittsburgh next year. So I tell you what, Nolan's been with us for four days. He has two more weeks to go. The amount of work and analysis that he's done already for us in the business office is absolutely amazing. So I'm bringing this up because in four years, if you see an applicant for someone in the business office, okay, you really want to give him strong consideration. And I'll give you an example. Today, he made a presentation to me. I had him analyze the overtime in North Penn School District for a 10-year period. And I gave him, you know, the raw data information, and then he made a presentation to me with charts and graphs and areas that we perhaps need to take a look at. So it was amazing, quite frankly. And he never used Microsoft Excel before. Previously, he used Google Sheets. But he learned how to do pivot tables and charts and graphs in a matter of basically a day, right, Nolan? So.
Okay.
You're modest. You did a great job.
They seem very humble, too.
Yeah. So he's also going to be assisting in a number of other projects, but it's really quite remarkable. And, you know, this is the first time since I've been at North Penn where we've had a student help us, like either as an intern or someone doing a career study. And it's worked out extremely well. So we're hopeful that we can continue this in the future.
That's great.
Dr. Kim, you are excused from the meeting to go get an application completed.
This is like our grow-your-own-accountant program, right?
And Nolan will attest to the fact that I've been twisting his arm for the last four days to consider school business as a career when he leaves University of Pittsburgh, right?
Why not?
Anyway, one more serious note then on that. Our treasures report is for the month of April. We had cash receipts totaling $4.8 million. Cash disbursements were $18.2 million. So so far this fiscal year, we've collected $286 million in revenue, and we spent $237.6 million in expenses. Our total cash balance at the end of April was $119.7 million, and that's up about $15 million year-over-year. So I ask for approval of the April treasures report, please.
Can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Okay, one moment as I get everything recorded. There we go. All right, next item we have is a sanction and approval of invoices for the month of April. And for all funds, they totaled $21,565,545.52. We're asking for ratification of those disbursements, please.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. McBain. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And finally, tonight for action, we have the budget transfers for April. And we did review these at the Finance Committee meeting, and they totaled $3,133,916.73. We're asking for approval of those budget transfers.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fusco and seconded by Mr. Rush. Any comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
And finally, for informational purposes only, we have the financial reports for the month posted in board docs. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Scrocky. All right. Final category here is other business. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Election. So this is, we have the election of the attached list of school board directors to serve on the Montgomery County, yeah, the annual, it's the annual election, okay. There are a total of seven seats on the MCIE board, which will become vacant on July 1, 2023. In accordance with the Pennsylvania School Code, the Board of School Directors from each of these member districts has submitted a nominee to serve on the MCIE Board of Directors. The nominees are listed on the attached ballot. We are requesting your assistance in distributing the attached memo and ballot to each of our nine school board members, which we did. We request that board members complete and sign their respective ballots, which we did. Superintendent's Administrative Assistant and Board Secretary compile the ballots and return the scanned copies to the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit. Completed ballots must be returned to Mary Dougherty in the Office of Executive Director at the MCIE no later than June 9. So do we have to take, Mr. Scrocky, do we have to take action on this?
Yeah, so the recommended, recommend the election of the attached list of school board directors to serve on the IU Board of Directors effective July 1, 2023.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley and seconded by Mr. Fusco. Any comments or questions?
I'd just like to point out, as a teacher in Montgomery County, the importance of the MCIE. And I'm absolutely confident that our own Mrs. Ramich will continue wonderful leadership there, and we're just very proud to send her to that great cause and have her help. Thank you.
Couldn't agree more. Thank you, Julianne, for stepping up.
Thank you. I enjoy serving. It's great. It's a great group.
I voted for you twice this week. Okay. All right. So I think there's a motion on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right. Is there any other business?
I have a request. Part of our respons, like I was going to say earlier, part of our responsibility as board members is to keep the public educated. Suggestions were made earlier that items on the action agenda were first seen by the board 24 hours ago. Would you please educate our public about how items get onto the action agenda? Dr. Bauer?
Yeah, sure. So, and Mr. Summers, please feel free to interject. You're the legal counsel here. However, any action items, items to be voted upon have to be posted publicly within 24 hours. So typically, for an action meeting, our agenda, for example, tonight's meeting was at 7:00 PM. Yesterday's agenda went live at 4:25 in the afternoon. However, we are building the agenda throughout the previous week or two. So there are items that we are packing into the agenda, each department, Dr. Waters' department, Mr. Scrocky's department. I may have items and so forth. We're all adding. Dr. Kim adds a personnel thing. So that agenda is a draft agenda that we are working on for weeks. So when an item comes in that needs to be reviewed by the board, it is dropped in there. It's live. You guys have access to it. You can read it. So just because the agenda goes live 24 hours in advance doesn't mean you guys haven't reviewed the documents. So I just want to make that clarification. This agenda went live about 27 hours before today's meeting, but this contract was available well before that.
And isn't it true that most or all items on the action agenda are reviewed in other committees before they even get to the action agenda?
Certainly. So in this, in this instance, the concept of developing a contract for design happened at two work sessions, a community forum, and facilities and operations meetings, authorizing the administration to work with our attorneys and Schrader Group to develop a contract.[1550.91]